Good morning everyone.
Good morning.
It's our first day of rain in how many days? How many months? Does anyone know? Last time all the concrete was wet and asphalt? Curry?
A month and a half ago.
A month and a half ago? Anyway, we haven't done a town hall in a long time, so we just wanted to kind of just bring everybody up to date on where we're at and where we're going and where we're headed. So I think it's important for me as a leader to make sure that I communicate and tell you where we're going. So for me, where we're going is into the best market we've ever seen because what happens is there's a lot of turmoil out in the market and things are being said and a lot of fear is being presented. Well, a lot of fear, there's a lot of opportunity. So if you read my newsletter, there's fear, false evidence appearing real, right? So sometimes whatever you tell yourself, you become. And I am a firm believer of that. So when I think I'm not doing the right thing and I beat myself up, I call Jack, Denise, Keith, you know, I throw up on them and say, hey, they're like, oh, that wasn't so bad because a lot of it was in my head, right? So I think as we go through the next six months, it's exciting because we have more opportunities. We have a group out of Colorado that's going to be joining us. It's 225 million. We just landed a deal in Texas. I was in Texas. A joint venture, we're going to be doing joint venture deals with builders, a lot of opportunity. And it's new to us, a joint venture. So a joint venture means that VIP will own 55% of this new entity and the builder will own 45% of that entity. They will use our services, which they have seen what we've built. If you want to see kind of what we've mapped out of all the different departments that we have, it's pretty amazing what this group here does from a corporate standpoint to make sure that we have sellable loans, that we have the ability to continue to close loans. We have the best scorecards in the business. Chase is one of the hardest places to deliver packages to. So we have the highest scorecard. We have the lowest profile pushed through them and we have the best pricing from them. And why is that? Because the touches on our files, you all do such a good job in manufacturing alone, that we win together. So everyone like high five each other, like turn around, high five each other. High five. The noise is good. So the noise is good because without you all, we don't, we're not able to do this, right? And for us, right, there's things that we need to do to be successful and without the operational staff, we have nothing. So thank you for making that happen. Without the sales, right, the sales guys, right, they've got to do 20% or 25% more than they've ever done before because a lot of the stories they tell themselves, something's changing. Well, I believe like the buffalo, right? When a storm comes, buffalo runs into the storm so they can get through the storm quicker. I believe that we're all buffalo and I believe that we're warriors to the business. So when we wrote our business plan, we were about warriors to the business and being successful. So our salespeople, when they need something, our sense of urgency has to go through the roof, right? So sense of urgency, right, in heart, effective sense of urgency, that has to go up because our salespeople, the more confident they become, the better job security we have, right? So our job is to give them the most confidence so they can lead and lead with authority. We spent all weekend building a new market rate buster program that's coming out for originators that's going to be amazing. So what's going to happen is we'll even see more volume pickup through VIP. So it's exciting times for us and we're really excited about the future. So we wanted to just touch on that. What else do we have? We have had some tough things that have happened and I wanted to recognize Kim Celeste, please come up here, please, because I know that we all were there for you. And I know it's a tough thing. We've had a lot of tough times. You know, and the journey of life, and I say it, it's so sad because you don't know when this stuff's going to... No, I told you I wasn't going to cry, so I didn't know what I was saying. But what I'm saying is it's just difficult, right? And I know that we have someone standing right next to me that understands it better than I understand it, right? And we sometimes feel sorry for ourselves. Quit feeling sorry for yourself and live and enjoy life.
Yeah, and I want to take a minute to thank each and every one of you. I don't know if I would have been able to get through this without my worked family. You guys are so giving and checked in with me daily to see how I was doing, see how Tony was doing. And I mean, this company just shows so much heart, but you know, at the end of the day though, Jay always says that we're on a short run here and it's so true. It's three months ago today that he was diagnosed with, you know, his brain cancer and he only lasted seven weeks. So you know, you want to love, you know, hug your loved ones though, you know, and just enjoy every minute of life because you know, it can be taken away from you just like that and change everything. But the company, I mean, so amazing. I don't know what I would have done without all of you. So many people showed up for the celebration of life and then the memorial tournament for Tony and then the meals that you guys had delivered. So many people came to our house or had gift cards sent and I just, I don't know what I've done without all of you. So I just wanted to thank everybody for all your support.
And Kim, thank you. You're amazing and you're a great leader for underwriting. And you make all these guys, I know, she's one of the best I've ever met. She's worn the L.O.'s shoes. You understand how difficult it is and I know that I'm speaking for all of them and they love you and they know that we're here to close loans, not deny loans.
Exactly. So yeah, thanks guys.
That's not fun to talk about, but it's real, right? So life's real, right? So I think the key is like when I have this pain in my stomach for a long time, I probably should go get it checked out, right? So I think people, if you have something that's bothering you or something feels off, right? The medicine of things is there to help us, right? We pay a lot for insurance, let's use the insurance, right? So let's make sure that we're healthy. Get a health checkup would be my recommendation. If you're on your cell phone, right, let's put it on speaker. I don't know what's causing, but we're seeing a lot of this, you know, and I don't know what I don't know and I don't know a lot, so I'm just being common sense, right? Something weird when you have a battery next to your head, right? And we have a lot of that going on, so let's, you know, is it better in your pocket? You know, I don't know. So I think maybe set it away, I have no idea, maybe, where's Mets? Where's Mets? Oh, yeah, he'll do the research. These are in-house doctors. So.
Not licensed.
Not licensed, yeah.
Still very good.
Yeah.
Let's just get that legal disclaimer out there.
But I think what's fun though, right, in life, it's a journey, right? And we just saw one of the worst parts of the life journey with Kim. But we've also, I don't know when we had the party, but we have a baby factory that just happened. So anybody that's had a baby, please come stand on the middle podium. If your wife's had a baby, I'm sorry. Please come on the middle podium.
This is what a special young basketball team.
So now we know how Julie built this, right? So thank you Julie. Julie, we appreciate you. Now it worked out. So anyway, from each one of you, just, you know, we have two first timers and a third timer. So let's start with Mike Stier. Just tell us what it feels like to be on the front end of the journey, like being a first time dad, just share with the group, not, don't talk to me, just spin this way.
Yeah, so unbelievable. I am one who never really thought I was going to have kids growing up. I took Deena for $1,000 when I first started working because she bet me that I'd be married by the time I was 30 and I wasn't. So I waited as long as I could and you know, couldn't be happier this week, last weekend, not this weekend, but the last weekend, so Remi is eight, nine days old now. And was absolutely amazing to go from like a bump to a human, to holding and touching and he's adorable, he's precious, you know, absolutely love him and you know, can't wait to give him all the opportunity in life to do whatever it is he chooses to do. Awesome.
How can you name Christopher Roberts Mike Stier for CRM? I know Pete's out there thinking about it.
Because I have a wife. The only reason.
Is he getting a tattoo though, maybe?
Spear.
It's a spear.
He's not for sure he was going to try to sneak that one in, but I was like encouraging behind the scenes because it would be really cool, right? Because that's where he lives, in Breeze, right? So if you haven't used Spear and you're new to the company and you keep saying you don't know why, you probably want to check it out because the amount of money that's gone into this and the hard work and the dedication is through the roof. And I think we have more opportunity. We've had people that have left this company, Mike and Rick Mount, that their owners are flying in, sitting in that room with me and they want what we have. So I mean, Mike's a great job, Pavlee, Spear Team, you know, hats off to you guys because you guys have built something that is a differentiator and if people aren't using it and going outside of the VIP family of technologies, right, we have technology that people want, right? So they've been here, right? It's hard to get people to understand what's there if you don't use it, right? So in my garage, I use like three tools, right? But there's a lot of really good tools in there. This is an amazing tool and I know Bill Moore is in the process of buying a new house and he's in transition. So I've got to hang out with Bill for the last week and he's told me that Spear has changed his life because now he's actually has one place where he's actually held accountable and can move the needle if he doesn't drop the ball. So I know his production is going up and he contributes a lot of that to Spear. So thank you guys. And then Steven, what do you got for us?
Oh, well, being a dad is fun so far. Eating all the pee and poop and beef all over me since then. He's already going to be a big hugger. He's hugging my mom last night and me, so I praise him to be the biggest hugger ever. Yeah, it's fun though. He's going to be three weeks old tomorrow, so eh, he's just a cute little dude. His name is Logan Sidney Metz. Sidney has been in my father's family for five generations now and then Logan because I'm a nerd and I like Wolverine. Didn't tell Melissa it was after Wolverine though. I just mentioned the name Logan and kind of left out the whole ex-pan part.
Are you sure you shouldn't be in sales? Because they leave a lot of stuff out and they're like, no, it's good. We'll fix that later. Michael, I think we got him in the wrong position. And Steven's group does an amazing job and he's always here. He's been one of the staples in VIP for a long time and your heart's huge and I appreciate everything you do and you're a great leader because you show up and you outwork everyone and you hug everyone. So Stuart told me, you need a fist bump. I'm supposed to hug people, but I got a baby and I didn't even tell you guys I had a surgery and there's something special. I knew HR's in here somewhere. Okay, Stuart, go for it.
Okay, third kid. Has anyone ever gone from two dogs to three dogs? Because I've done that too. It's the same, you just feed one more. Nothing changes. His name's Hank Michael and we've gotten a lot of great compliments on the name Hank. My favorite story though is just recently when my wife's parents came to visit, like there was a moment where I was alone in the kitchen with my mother-in-law and she's the sweetest lady you've ever met in your life. And she's like, so, she kind of inched towards her, she's like, so Hank, huh? I'm like, yeah. She's like, is that a family name or where did that come from? And I know this woman so well that I know that this is like her way of trying to figure out like why did you name your kid Hank is basically what she's asking me. So I thought that was funny. And of course I felt, you know, ask your daughter, it's her, she did it, so. But yeah, it's all good. What can I say? I mean, we're just, you know, trying to keep them all alive. All good. So.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
What's funny is like I get the text finally because Stuart likes to keep things close to the vest, right? Because it's like, I don't know if he should have been a poker player or what, but it's like, dude, what's going on? And I'm like, what's the name? He's like, oh, I don't know yet. Like, is it a boy or a girl? So sometimes it's hard to get him to release information, right? So I think when I hear that his name's Hank, I'm like, because he loves country? That ain't country, I'll kiss your ass is what I'm thinking he's naming down. Right? Is that what I said back?
That was my favorite text.
But what's funny is he did not, he did not name, you're like, who, I'm like, what happened? Because I was like the mother-in-law asking all the questions, like seriously dude, come on, did you not like throw out, like, you know, trying to bait him to get you over here by the Hank name?
Well, you know the game. Yeah. Eventually had to come to me first, okay?
No, but it's pretty cool. But that's the cycle of life and congratulations, you guys. Let's all give a big high five. Are they all going to be LOs?
There you go.
VIP LOs. Let's see, what else do we have to cover? We had the Phoenix Children Hospital race, everyone had an amazing time, Karen's staff, everyone did a great job. That was awesome, right? Ryan was on TV. I don't know if anybody caught that clip, but make sure that you're watching the homepage. There's some powerful stuff that we're doing as a community. Our name is out there. We are, you know, exclusive, right? We're not trying to get everyone in the boat, we're trying to get the right people in the boat. So everybody who works here, right, you are an owner, right, to me? So how we represent ourselves inside the company and outside the company, we are becoming, you know, a leader in our community, so people respect who we are. So make sure outside of here, we're doing respectful things. So we want to make sure we're taking care of people because it's weird how this stuff happens and it's fun to be part of something that we've built together, right? We are better together and we're going to continue to get better. And when new people come aboard, right, what's our job, right? We call it break the stallions, teach them the VIP way, right? And it takes each and every one of us to be able to understand, we can learn a lot from the new people coming and keep an open mind because that way we can get to a better spot. So does anyone have questions for me? Boomer, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just, I just think at this time in our history, as I've been here over the last five years, I think you guys are probably feeling it too, there's just so much positive energy headed into the future in one of the toughest times in the market. So I just got to say that from a leadership perspective, that's what I spend my life doing. One of the things I love about Jay, Keith, Jack, Deena, Mike, all these people here is leadership's tough and when you go through tough times with those personal stuff like what Kim went through, leaders have to make the tough decisions and move the company forward. And so when you see a market that's getting tougher and a company that's getting more energy moving forward, at the same time, we're helping people get through some of the toughest times in their lives, all happening at the same time. I want you guys to know, at least from my perspective, that is a really good sign because that means that you're in a spot where the leadership is willing to do the tough things and have the tough conversations as well as the great conversations. And when there's energy moving forward, when things are tough, we know what happens in the future as we end up getting more market share. So you guys are representing right now in a very real way what Jay's always said, that we can do more together and if we lock our arms together and we run through brick walls together, those are the people that you want to do life with. And you're doing life with everybody in this room. If you just look around, these are the people you're doing life with. You're here eight to 10 hours a day, racing trikes, making money, high fiving each other, having fun and all the countless stuff that goes into all the joking around and all the fun I know I get to have in my life with the people in this room. And I would just encourage you, continue to focus on that, continue to build up Jay and Keith and Jack and the leaders of your departments, help them because leadership's not easy, right? And especially at VIP, leadership is all about supporting the people that are in there on the front lines, making it happen every day. So for you, you know, definitely help these leaders do what they need to do to continue to run through the storms as Jay said. I always think, if you guys haven't heard this story, I thought I'd share it right now too, but just to go along with the animal theme, geese, if a goose gets injured, a lot of people don't know this, but if a goose gets injured, two other geese will leave the bee and go down and hang out with that injured goose until it either gets better or dies. And then they go try and find their pack, but two will go with it. And when you look at a company like VIP, that's what I've seen happen so many times. You go through a tough time and people will rally around you and help. I mean, as a cancer survivor myself, having seen what, you know, DT went through a few years ago, what Kim's going through now, I can't imagine a better place to be to go through a difficult time than this group right here. And when you can go through difficult times and come out better together on the other side, running faster, accomplishing more together, that's when you know, at least in my opinion, you're in an incredibly awesome, very special place. And I think you know that if you talk to people around here. So those are just the thoughts out of my head, but. Thanks Jay.
Keith, do you have anything?
Yeah, I think like along with John's talking about, something that I carry around with me every day that I think a lot of us do naturally is the mindset is not I have to, but I get to. And if you apply that to so many things, it actually, it's the way things occur to us. So an example, October, November, December, January, right, it's getting a little slower, pricing's a little bit tougher. So how do we hunker down? Do we have to do stuff or do we get to do stuff? An example, we pitched to Eric to move his group down to us. So we're going to go like this, we're going to close an office mood. Or do we get to work together and have a bunch of people down here? I mean, it is the way it occurs to us and it's very, it is very powerful. I'm totally pumped for Ray Tree to come down here. They got a ton of energy, we're going to feed off each other and crank it. From year two, year three, year four, this company start, I cannot tell you how many times I've had people say, you guys started a company in '06, '07, like what were you thinking? Like that was scary. No, we got to. We got to work with the people that we know, love and trusted and build on that. So it's just a mindset and I think it works with everything. Working on a loan, clearing conditions, a big thing along those lines is capacity. I think we have to challenge ourselves, these limiting beliefs or mental limitations of, if my role can do eight files, do I leave the day feeling good if I'm doing 20 files? Or what's my daily capacity? What's my monthly capacity? You got to, you got to push yourself to be more efficient, to really feel like not only did I get to come to work today, but I rocked it and I made a difference. And that's the mindset, I think, when we go through October, November, December, January, we're going to take in less revenue, we have to do more loans. So that's what it's going to look like. We're going to do more loans than we normally do. In addition, all the great stuff that we're going to be doing, more loads anyway, but there's a mindset that we have to get to on capacity.
Awesome. Ryan, you're playing the cameras, right? Yeah, Ryan. It's also what it's like to be on TV, first time TV here, right?
No.
No? Why are you so nervous? Because she came up and I was like nervous. I said, there's no way Ryan is nervous.
I was nervous because the information that I was going to talk about was completely different than she wanted me to talk about. So she went from like, oh no, we're not going to do any of this stuff, you prepared? And I went, oh, okay.
Leave your bag, come on.
But you know, I talked a lot about just, like she said, just speak from the heart instead of like going through all the things that I had studied, so to speak. And yeah, it was easy in, when you're talking about things you believe in, right? And believing in this company and Jay and Keith and you know, everybody that I work with on my team, it's easy to speak from the heart in a positive manner. And she felt it, I think, like she's like, wow, that went way better than I thought it was going to go. Because I was nervous coming in first when she changed it all up on me. But she just asked me a simple question and it just was easy to just keep going and going and going because I do believe that, you know, we got a special thing going on here. And going back to the right, the race that we had, you know, and seeing the guys from Tempe come down, you know, they have an incredible, like their own separate deal going down there. If you guys ever, have ever gone down there and visited their branch, it's really amazing how good they do with, with their people. But spending time with them afterwards, we went up over to Zips and their wives were with them and it was Kent, Jeff and Mike. And listening to them just go like, this is, in their mind, they're seated going like, this is unbelievable. Like they've never had this life before in the 15 years they've been in this business. Like to see, like just the significant others see it too. And they're just like, they just think that this is just the most amazing place to be and it's good to see because sometimes you get a little nervous, right? That not everybody's feeling it because they're off on an island, kind of by themselves. But you know, everybody that we bring on, you know, we try to do our best to make sure that they fit the culture and they're not going to cause trouble. And it's, it's good to see that things, you know, things work out and we have, you know, a positive environment here.
Awesome. And Ryan's been doing an amazing job recruiting. I just met with another person today, just wants to move, a big guy that will help us on another level and we're just going to keep adding people. We've got another commitment out of Tucson. We've got a bunch of people getting recruited in Hawaii. So there's a lot of amazing momentum. But what's fun for me to just hear that, right? Because I don't even know what I'm going to say when I'm going to say it, right? Everyone goes, are you going to write something? I go, no, that's not how I work. Because it's hard, right? If you have to write something to go in order, right? So you just have to make it up on the fly. And that's why I'm, I heart an originator because you have, an originator's job is the hardest job in the world. Do you agree, Kim? Okay, so it's, it's hard because it's very difficult to take one of the biggest transactions in someone's life to build the trust when people devalue the trust component of our business. And what happens is when they don't understand the value of what we do and the level of expertise that we have at this company, the value is we're so much more than what we can even charge compared to what they think the value is, right? Has anyone bought a home in here? Okay, is it stressful at all? Was it stressful when you have been in the business? Is it stressful going through your process? Still it is, right? I know it's stressful. So people have to understand what we have here is amazing and what we've built and the culture that we've built, like that's the best compliment we could all have, right? That wasn't directed, that was, Ryan was talking to each and every one of us, right? Because we've done something and we've created something that's not out there. It's very special. So anyway, thank you all for making us look amazing. Stuart, what, close us out with some good stuff and just from the heart, right? Because I think Stuart, right, as a leader of the company, running one of the biggest teams, it's, you know, the group, you guys always go above and beyond when we bring these people on, like we couldn't do it without you, right? So you guys crush it, you know, and we don't say thank you enough. But what I can tell you is it gives him way more confidence, does it? Right? It gives me more confidence, right? So when they did Tempe a year ago, I think you guys had your biggest month ever, they did 10 million and they, I think they apped 144 or 114 deals on that transition and through that team with their biggest month ever. And I had the guys going, I'm just going to stay on that team, is that cool? And then they did it again with Ross's group, right? Ross's group came in and that thing happened, right? Really quick. So you all do an amazing job and maybe I can talk for you, but come on over, Stuart.
I got too many kids now to think of anything good to say.
Are you tired?
No, I'm a little tired. I was about to lie and say I wasn't tired. We're being honest, Ryan's, it's a heartfelt, I'm not feeling that shit too. I think what I would say is going off a lot of what Keith was saying, mindset is everything. And I think about this a lot, we were talking about this this weekend, you know, your perception is your reality, right? What you think is true is true and what you think's going to happen is going to happen. And there's some real powerful stuff with that. And if you wake up feeling like it's going to be a crappy day, I'm not into it today, I don't feel like coming into the office, I don't want to do anything, guess what? It's probably going to be a crappy day. So change the way it occurs to you, as Keith said, and wake up feeling like, if you feel that way, think about why. Why do you think it's going to be a crappy day? And diagnose yourself quickly and figure out how you can change your mindset. I know I do that a lot because we're not all perfect, right? We have stuff happening in our lives and you got to figure out how best you're going to maneuver through it. And you know, we were joking about, you know, to segue the whole kid thing, Mike said you'll be there soon once you start buying your kid Legos, by the way, save up because they're not cheap. The guy that invented Legos is by the way, is the smartest guy on the planet, the universe maybe. But we were joking, like you can wake up the first thing in the morning, early, the baby's crying, whatever, and you go to take a step and Legos are great, they're hiding in carpet and sharp and you're pissed, you're like, oh God. And you can be pissed about it, right? And then just be pissed for the next hour or you can laugh it off and be like, it's another Lego. So it's just, again, how it occurs to you, just like try to make fun of stuff too. Meaning make your day fun, make your job fun, right? It's like, we always say it's a short run and there's no sense for you to just feel like you're complacent and you're just going through the motions. Like see what you got to do to spice it up, raise your hand, talk to somebody. A lot of times that's a vulnerable thing for people, right?
They don't want, I don't want to go to Jay and say, hey Jay, I'm kind of feeling like I need something new, but I don't know what, because maybe he, I see that as I'm failing, right? Well, that's not the case, we're all here together. So if you, if you're looking for something new or a way to maybe just get some advice to spice things up, talk to the guy next to you. And you, you will be amazed what you find out when you open yourself up to other people and get rid of your ego or whatever to where, you know, just be vulnerable, it's all good. So I don't know if that makes sense, but do everything I just said and you're going to be great.
All right. What else do we have? Anything that I missed, Taryn?
Yeah, we get to draw for the raffle.
Oh, you're going to draw for the raffle?
Yeah.
Indiana, we have a new group, Indiana, that came on board. How is Indiana?
They're crushing it right now. They were fond of it.
So what are, what's their file count out right now?
We got 120 prospects, we got 40 in the pipe, we closed 20 construction loans.
That's pretty strong, so. And I know that's new to us, right? We've done, we were getting it ready, Ed was getting it in place, Amy's team, right? The disclosures, right? So Stefan had killed it. So the difference is we may, sometimes we'll just jump until something happens, then as we're falling down the cliff, right? We figure out what we're doing. So thank you all for your patience on that. So if you haven't done any of those, we're getting them more and more perfected, correct, DT?
Yeah.
Yep, so thank you for your patience with us, Dee, because, right? Without, you know, your support and helping the team, it is difficult because we don't know what we don't know on those and we're learning as we go. But it's not, you know, something that we shouldn't have been doing. We knew it was coming, we just didn't know how long the market was going to take to open back up to the construction loans. And thanks to Keith and Eric Killstrom and Jack with the relationship, those are former Waterfield Group and we're very excited that they're part of the family. So high five, Indiana, Fort Wayne, Indiana, Indiana. What else did I forget? The raffle, Ryan? Did you call it in?
We're going to.